Convene the committee of the whole, and we're convening this as a joint city council finance advisory committee meeting September fourteenth. I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson.
Here.
Finnukin.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Peddle.
Here.
Golden.
Here.
Teresinski.
Here.
Conlon.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Gerhardt. Fourteen present.
Okay, thank you. The item for consideration this evening is the water rate. We'll turn to city engineer John Laskowski to begin our meeting.
Evening mayor, city council, and finance advisory committee members. Today, we're here to discuss the study produced by Burns and McDonald, the water rate study and the water system master plan. If you recall, back in May, there's a, with the finance advisory committee, we had prepared several different presentations, both on fleet and facilities, the streets, fleet, the streets presentation and the water rate study. So initially, the first presentation we had from Burns and Mack was on May sixteenth. We had a follow-up memo regarding some questions we had at that meeting. So on May eighteenth, a follow-up memorandum was produced that addressed three points that were brought up at that meeting. The overall increase of the study period by scenario, the likely impact over time of proposed scenarios, and the alternative rate design with greater increase in service charges. So if you recall, at that time, the water system rate plan was a plan that analyzed the current, the current infrastructure of the city. So it addressed the, the supply, which is the groundwater or the wells where it comes from, the treatment, how we treat the water, the distribution system, which is the pipes in the ground. And we looked at basically all four of those components and decided, and analyzed it to see how much, how much it would cost to adequately fund the maintenance required for the infrastructure system. And once we had that figure in place, Burns and Mack then looked at the water rate study and determined what exactly would we need to do to maintain the system as proposed, including all the projects that Burns and McDonald had proposed at that time. And so some scenarios were produced at that point. And we began looking then at, later on, that we looked at the different scenarios at which the water rate study could potentially fund the water system improvements. And as you'll see later on, you'll see the typical impact that has on a typical water bill and get an idea from there where we're, where we might be headed. But, but the purpose tonight is staff would like to, to understand where we're going and get some direction from the finance advisory committee and the city council to determine how we'd like to address the infrastructure maintenance and future scenarios. So with that, we do have a brief presentation scheduled tonight by Burns and McDonald. Mr. Randy Patchett's here, and he's going to go through a brief PowerPoint presentation. Brian Favor from the water department, our water superintendent is here. Kathy Haley, our finance director is here, and I'm here representing the engineering department and public works. And collectively, we're going to answer any questions that may come up today. And so without any other delay, I'm going to like ask Randy to come to the podium.
Thank you. My name again is Randy Patchett with Burns and McDonald. I know I see some familiar faces from the last couple of times that we were out. We were asked to just kind of give a overall recap of where we're at and then add a little bit of additional information that was requested, I think, by some of you and by staff. So to kind of just get started, again, we'll recap on the water system master plan, which is, is what led up to the decision or the work that was done to determine that we wanted to have a removal and replacement program of approximately a million dollars a year in the city of DeKalb on average. Findings and recommendations that we came out of with that water master plan were basically water consumption. The city currently uses approximately 3.6 million gallons per day with about eighty percent, a little over eighty percent of that being residential and the rest being commercial institutional. This equates to about sixty-four gallons per population equivalent per day. The cities billed about one point, one, two billion gallons, I think, on average a year. It's about what you bill, correct Brian? And you actually produce about 1.22 billion gallons. So you have about an eight point one seven percent water loss in your system. And we were looking at the study, that's not uncommon, that's, that's reasonable. Again, I think we can always strive to reduce water loss, but it's not outside the norm for a system that's your age and sizes of mains and things. Water, so again, I think the, overall, your system seems to be in pretty decent shape. You have six deep water supply wells, three shallow water supply wells. Firm capacity is approximately 7.6 million gallons per day. Your projected maximum day demand, so we did look at future growth, future development to see if you needed to increase the capacity of your supply wells and of your treatment system. And what we found with the supply in the system, your projected future is about 6.5 million gallons per day. So you have sufficient firm capacity in your system and your existing wells are adequate to serve the existing population and future projections in terms of population. The capital improvements program and recommended rehabilitation of the city wells, which again, the city's already in the process of doing, and I believe has completed some of the, some of that work. Water treatment, water, raw water quality in the city is generally good. Low turbidity, low total organic carbon, high hardness, moderate iron manganese. You have detectable radium. Hardness is typically reduced from about seventeen grains per gallon to eight grains per gallon. Radium is reduced to less than five picocuries per liter. The city is using the most economical treatment approach, in our opinion, for meeting its current needs. You do currently have in your CIP replacement of your zeolite media. We concurred with that when looking at the system and talking with Brian and other, other operational personnel in the city. So overall, your water system is in pretty good shape in terms of both supply, capacity, treatment, and storage. On the storage side, again, what we found is that you have a combined storage of about 5.75 million gallons. Your projected future rate is 4.8. So your existing storage is adequate. And I think, again, in the CIP, and I keep bringing up what's in the CIP because these are things that worked into the rate study. What was in the CIP was repainting of three water towers. Your east water tower was fairly recently completed in, I believe it was 2014. Is that correct? So water distribution, you have about 177 miles of water main ranging from three to 24 inches in diameter, approximately 2,400 fire hydrants, approximately 3,000 valves and 11,000 service lines. Your projected 2034 demand, you know, your average day is 4.32 million gallons per day, per day. Your maximum is 6.48. Your peak hourly was 12.96 or about 13 million gallons today, per day. And what we did is we took your system, we modeled the system, we looked at those demands that we've talked about being in the system. We did modeling to evaluate whether you have any hydraulic deficiencies in the system. And we also looked at water break history. Where do you have water main that seems to have some, some integrity challenges in terms of frequent break history that should be considered for removal and replacement? So our two primary factors in developing the removal replacement program were hydraulic capacity and break history. What we determined, and this is fairly consistent with industry standards too, actually, it's a little lower than some of the AWWA association recommendations is what we, we came from our standpoint. We recommended that you replace approximately 55,000 linear feet of water main or 10.5 miles to alleviate hydraulic issues. So we had areas where you had, we saw some significant loss of pressure over a certain distance that was really due to the fact that the water mains, as water travels through the main, it takes more, the further out you get, it tends to lose pressure because of friction losses and things in the pipe. And we felt that you had about 10.5 miles of main that looked to us, based on our experience and industry criteria, that it was in need of replacement or upsizing for hydraulic capacity. We looked at proposing that you complete that replacement over about a thirty-year period and that any of the new mains that you construct in the city be no smaller, be a minimum of eight inches in diameter. So as we went through that, we developed a comprehensive water main replacement program that we felt could work over the next thirty years if you were to implement it. And that, and that the plan should provide a overall working schedule that is able to, as you move forward, you look at replacing the entirety of your system over a certain time period. And that time period, again, I think we really looked at being overall somewhere between a fifty and a hundred-year time period. And it's going to just kind of play itself out over time, but that's a one to two percent replacement rate on average. And that's pretty typical in terms of what, what needs to be done at most communities. So I think the consideration that we took into developing the plan or the program, especially the shorter-term program, was break history. So what we did is we coupled both break history, hydraulics, and developed recommendations for the village. And we also sat down with, I'm sorry, for the city, we also sat down with city staff and kind of reviewed to make sure that the areas that we were looking at or recommending in the removal replacement program made sense to city staff. And we had not overlooked anything that might have been repaired or replaced in the last year or two. So I think we developed a plan in conjunction with Brian that I think you felt you could support at this point, correct? So for the ten-year capital improvement plan that we looked at and we worked into the rate study, we identified approximately 13 million dollars worth of improvements. With water supply rehabilitation comprising approximately half a million of those, water treatment improvements approximately 900,000, water tower recoding slash repainting almost 2 million. And then a water main removal replacement program of approximately 9.9 million. So that's what we've looked at over ten years in terms of capital improvements in the water system, pretty Kalb. And a number of these, really, almost all of these items, with the exception of the water main replacement, were already identified by city staff. And we incorporated that. And we did conclude with, with, independently with the approach that city staff was taking on those items. So that kind of summarizes where we were at with the water master planning. I think I think it's fair to say that the city of DeKalb is, in our opinion, moving in the right direction and does have adequate capacity, supply, distribution capabilities to meet its future needs over the next 30 years. So water system rates, there's a little chart that you may have seen that just kind of talks about the rate study process. Rate study process really includes three components: rate, financial planning, cost of service, and rate design. And I think the key component on, they're all very important, but when taking into consideration of the rate design, the objective of any entity that's working with the community to do that is try to develop a rate that allows for a sufficient balance to remain funding balance in reserve or in your capital improvements program and also accomplishes the ability to do the work identified in your capital program, service your operation and maintenance, and other costs associated with your water program while balancing the impact to the constituents in the community in terms of rates. This chart here kind of shows where the city of DeKalb is in terms of competitiveness with several of your surrounding communities as well as some communities that I think we looked at in addition to what we had previously looked at in the report. In particular, staff asked us to get some rates for, I believe it was Western, where University of Western Illinois, Eastern Illinois, Southern Illinois, and I believe it was Illinois State, right? So when we looked at this and we look at these rates, you can see where the green is on the chart. The green is DeKalb's existing. And in looking at those, if you notice, Southern Illinois is just slightly less than city of DeKalb at this point in time. It's just to the left of city of DeKalb. But if you look a little towards your right, you can see that Illinois State or Bloomington, Illinois, Charleston, Illinois, and McComb, Illinois are currently all higher than the city of DeKalb in terms of what their water rates are. So, excuse me, I think the request by staff to look at these additional communities does kind of validate where city of DeKalb is, and you're definitely not on the high end. You tend to be on the low, average to low end of the current rate structure for similar So again, some of the key assumptions that we made in developing the rates were we did not forecast any growth in customer accounts or usage. What we've seen in terms of development in the city is it's been fairly flat. And I think the projections are that it's not going to decline necessarily, but it is conservative for us to say that it's going to remain fairly flat in developing the rate. And from what we've seen historically, it has remained relatively flat. So it's not appropriate for us to make an assumption that all of a sudden you're going to have a big development that's going to want a whole lot more water, that's going to impact the rates that you're setting now. If that happens, then you have somebody come in that wants to use a million gallons of water or something of that nature, then you can kind of revisit what your service charge would be to them and see if that has any impact. But for right now, we wanted to make sure that you're able to take care of your community, provide the service you're providing with what the current and projected future demands look like. We used a CPI, cost, price index of 1.5 percent increase, which is a very standard right now, that's what it is, in terms of a very safe assumption, we think. General utility inflation of 3 percent in new debt terms over 20 years at a 2.5 percent interest rate. That new debt service can come from either bonding or low-interest loans through the state SRF program. Right now, we are hearing that state SRF loans are actually going to go down as low as probably about 1.85 percent in the near future. That doesn't mean that they're not going to be creeping back up later, but I think our point is our 2.5 percent, we think, is a reasonable estimate in terms of what the city of DeKalb could borrow money for should it choose to do so. We wanted to have operating reserve equal to 25 percent of your costs, meaning that your annual costs were a million dollars, we'd want to have $250,000 of reserve. And we wanted to have a capital reserve of $1 million. So that was kind of the criteria that we set up and we felt was reasonable for the city of DeKalb. Again, this, all this figure really shows right here is that we made the assumption, and I think, again, we made it based on historical usage, that water rate revenues by class in the city are going to remain constant or relatively constant. Here we showed the disbursement of the capital improvement program over the next 10 years as it's been set up. So what this chart really shows, it shows how the village, or the city is intending to possibly spend its cash over the next 10 years. In the capital improvement program, the figure below it shows what the, and excuse me, I actually don't have a cold, I just am not sure why I've got a very dry throat here, so I apologize. Capital funding plan, so that's kind of how we saw money coming into the community and going from there. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Now I'm going to owe you one, right? So what this, what this next slide shows is that the, if you were to keep everything equal and want to step back and fund your capital improvements program that we've set up and we've talked about, under your existing rate structure, you do not have enough revenue to do that. So if you said, "We're not going to raise rates, we're not going to do anything," and go forward, you cannot implement the program that's been put together for the city. This slide here, or this figure here, basically shows that you can, if you make the recommended adjustments, as were presented in the rate study that was previously provided to the city, if you make those adjustments, you will be able to meet those criteria that were identified in the development of the rate study and fund your capital improvement program. So you'd be able to maintain your 25 percent reserve of operating, you'd have a $1 million capital fund balance going forward. This shows where you would fall now if you were to increase your rates as proposed in the recommended rate improvement or rate increases that were included in the rate study. So the first green line shows where you would fall. Now, that's existing. The second green bar shows where you would move to if you were to accept and move forward with the recommendations in the rate study. And as you can see, if you move forward with the recommendations in the rate study, you will continue to have rates that are very competitive with similar communities with universities, Eastern University of Illinois, Western Illinois, and Illinois State would all have rates in their communities, their respective communities would have rates that are higher than the city of DeKalb's. There are some spreadsheets that I believe Kathy passed out. Now, I have those, if you would like, I can call them up on here, or you can just chat. And what Kathy had done is we had had some spreadsheets and things in our rate study, and I think that members of the committee and the city council had asked that she include all the different utilities, sewer, garbage, those kinds of things, and couple them with the water to see what kind of an overall rate impact that would have to customers in the city of DeKalb. So I'll let Kathy speak to that.
Thank you. John's handing out hard copies. It was a part of the agenda packet as well. I just kind of did an estimate based on the scenario one, scenario one A, and scenario two. I did not project out scenario three. It was not recommended by Burns &amp; McDonald because it did not fully fund the capital improvement plan that they are recommending. So I did project out those three with the water. There's a water usage rate on DeKalb, the city of DeKalb's bill, and then there's a flat rate as well. I projected those out based on either scenario one, scenario one A, or scenario two. The sewer charge, well, I have a history of where the sewer rate is at. I kind of did a flat projection of 3 percent. I don't know what the sewer rates increases will be. I did an average over the last five years, and it was about 5 percent. That seemed a little high, so I did a 3 percent increase for the sewer rate. And again, that can fluctuate, but it kind of gives you an idea of if that rate were to go up as well, what it would do to an average resident's water bill. And then the garbage, I have exactly what that increase will be until 2018. And then I just projected that same increase down through 2024, which is about 2.5 percent. So you can see an average user, and I did it on a monthly basis, comparison between fiscal year 2015 and 2016, we're a little at a skew with the water rate study. They used $3.10 as their base rate. We're now already at $3.15. So the increase for that first year is a little less than 4.5 percent on the usage water rate increase. But you can see a typical water bill, the water rate in 2015 for eight cubic feet per month is about $30.20. Currently, will go up to about $31.26 with the scenario one recommendation, which is the recommendation Burns &amp; McDonald is recommending.
I just want to add some clarity to what is presented in the packet for the meeting. This is pages 14, 15, and 16, which are the same charts that you're referring to. I think it should be noted that all of the numbers up above 2011 through 2024, those only include one unit of water.
Exactly.
So the increase is off just a tad because it doesn't take into account, all it does is total up if you used one unit of water, this is what your bill would be. And as you get down lower, then you take into account the eight units. And when you get to that point, I've calculated the percentage increases, but I don't want to interrupt you any more than I already have.
Okay. Great. No, you're exactly correct. The top portion of this spreadsheet is just really for one cubic feet. The typical average bill is, that you see in the middle portion, is for eight cubic feet, and that again is per month. Our bills are for every three months, so this is for one month. And then you can see the sewer and the garbage, I tried to incorporate that just to show that the total monthly increase for scenario one, for a typical average water bill, would be about $2.34 more per month for a resident.
Which would represent 2.92 percent.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Scenario one A and two are the same. You can see scenario one A, scenario one is, shows the lowest increase initially and because it's more of a level increase for the first four or five years. Scenario one A is a little bit higher initially, and scenario two, again, is significantly higher because it shows the largest increases in the first two years, so.
Kathy?
Yep.
Two things. In scenario one A, the one-year increase from 2015 to 2016 would be 3.69 percent. And in scenario two, it would be 4.56 percent, which backs up what you've just told the council and the committee. And I also worked it out, out to 2024, to show the effects that the different scenarios have over time. And they're all reasonably close, but somewhat surprisingly, scenario two in 2024, assuming everything that has been disclosed with respect to the assumptions, would bring the average monthly water bill to $125.37. Scenario one would bring it to $125.74. So scenario two would be the cheapest in 2024, followed by scenario one, $125.74. And one A would be at $126.50. So in 2024, if our assumptions are correct, we would be paying the highest water rates. Now, that doesn't mean anything with respect to how much money you accumulate for the capital projects, but it does let you know at the end of the time period where we would be with respect to our water bills. And, you know, it'd be between $125 and $126 per, or $127 per month.
And just to restate, that includes water, sewer, and refuse.
Correct.
Kathy, one question I have. Burns &amp; McDonald had recommended reserves, operating and capital reserves. Are we at those reserves currently?
We are.
Thank you. Just one question about the capital portion of this. If I understand, our current rate increases are CPI, and they're assumed at 1.5 to 1.7 percent annually in the base rate study. And now we're talking about 4, 4.5 percent. So we're going to add, you know, 2.5, 3 percent to the current projected rate increases to drive the capital fund necessary to fund the capital expansion, right? How do we ensure ourselves that we isolate the capital funds to be only designated for capital and that they don't dribble down into operating? And will we set up a separate fund, separate account to ensure ourselves that we capture that revenue for capital purposes?
We currently, okay, there is a capital water fund that is strictly for the revenue collected on impact fees, and that's for new, what, correct me if I'm wrong, new water mains only. So the one water fund is for operating and all other capital infrastructure. Currently, our rate isn't necessarily broken up to have an operating side and a capital side. I think it's something throughout the budget process every year that we need to analyze and make sure that we are either staying on track. That's why we have a capital improvement plan to target for and to stay on track with it and to monitor our fund balance at the same time as we're watching revenues come in. Revenues could come in higher, and then maybe we revisit the rate. Revenues could come in lower, and then maybe we don't do as many capital improvement plant projects as we had on our target, targeted agenda for that year. So I think it's a matter of constantly monitoring it during the budget process.
So it'll be up to the city council and the monitor of the capital plan regarding the capture of the capital fees that we're expecting to drive this plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, is it Mike? I'm sorry.
I think another point that should be made is that, you know, the water fund is an enterprise fund. And... an enterprise fund, and the council has been pretty true to not robbing Peter to pay Paul. But it's very important with respect to an enterprise fund that you maintain the sanctity of that and that the monies that are collected need to be diligently watched by the legislature, the city council, and the staff to make sure that there's no bleeding of the revenues outside of the water fund, as well as Tom's point that, once you've done that, you need to make sure that there's no bleeding from capital to operations.
The state does that.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any suggestion how to make that a law? Because I've been up here long enough. I saw it happen time after time after time when they ran out of money for payroll before they finally laid people off, when they realized they were functionally bankrupt. It will happen again, and we can't control the future unless we can somehow tie it to a law that requires, I don't know, eight out of eight, maybe, to change it? I mean, it'll happen. That's why I don't like building up these funds. It doesn't make sense. I'm always the proponent for borrow the money when it's a low bonding rate, and then it has to be, the payments be made. Then there is any way that a future council or staff can get to that money because it's an obligation?
Well, anything that you do, okay, can be undone by a future council in some fashion. I mean, there's no way to make that permanent, even if, even if there's a way to put some boundaries, boundaries on there. I don't know of any way that you could prevent a future council from just passing a new ordinance or a new, you know, proclamation, whatever, that would just reverse what this, this council would prefer. You can, you know, one of the things that DeKalb has done, which is very major in the last year, year and a half, is we have come up with financial policies, which you've passed, and those financial policies are included as, as part of the budget. So it's very clear that you could put in to your financial policies something regarding the, you know, the dedication of these revenues and the importance of maintaining the sanctity of that. But I will leave it to a lawyer to tell you what you can legally.
Why can't we make it a law that it requires a public referendum to dip into that for other than the capital improvement intended?
I don't have that expertise. That's for your attorney to answer.
And again, I know this is all city.
If you could step to the microphone, I bet you have an answer.
And this is, well, I don't know that I have an answer, but I'll just give you an example of some things that happen that, that whether we like it or not, you've got your $250,000 in operation and maintenance reserves, and we've got $1 million that we're trying to sustain in capital. Things happen in communities, not just paying salaries, but even just on the water side of the business, where we may have something happen in the system where a $250,000 set aside does not cover what occurs. We have some type of a failure or something that happens. So I think the point we'd make here is we're not trying, the rate structure that we put together, we're not trying to grow a fund, we're not trying to make the million-dollar fund or the 25% fund all of a sudden a five or $6 million fund or increase the percentage of revenue that the city has to maintain and operate its systems. I think what we're trying to do is set up a program where you can take care of your infrastructure, and your point is very valid. What happens if we have to take money from that and not take care of our infrastructure? I think what we're trying to do is set up a program where there will be debt involved. There's three debt issuances in this, so there, you are going to be paying back debt with respect to the funds that you're going to be raising. And what we're trying to do is put you in a position where you can kind of sustain your water system long-term going forward. If we looked at things at status quo, what's going to transpire right now is you're not going to be able to continue really any water main removal and replacement programs without finding some other source outside of the water rate, generation for those funds. So realistically, what we're looking at here is we're not looking at trying to build reserves or build capital. We're trying to maintain so that you can do realistically a, again, not on the high end, but a reasonable, and when you look at it, some communities will be more aggressive and want to replace their entire systems in the next 50 years. I've got one that wants to replace their entire water main system in the next 25 years. We're looking at something that's 50 to 100. So we're trying to balance that, make sure you can move forward. And I think as you folks have already pointed out, you really need to set it aside, pay attention to it, legislate it, put it in your CIP, put it in your programs going forward so that when you have your overall capital and operating budget for the city, you know where things are allocated and where they're earmarked. But, but we also have to be flexible enough to know that things happen, and sometimes things happen, and you have to be able to manage that within the system that you've got. So I've not seen, and where I'm going with this, I've not seen any community ever set it up as a law. So I've never seen that in my career.
Question, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, and thank you, Randy. A couple of things I recall from the first thing that may be worth repeating. Mr. Peddell had made some comments, and the one thing I recall from our earlier conversation that may not be coming across is that, from an overall perspective, the findings of the, of your group were that the city was highly rated overall in its water position.
Yes.
And its ability to fund capital, as it has throughout its recent life, to maintain a highly effective system. I think we were trying to get an A, B, or C, and you wouldn't give any As to anybody, but I think we got a strong B.
You got a B. Yes, you did.
Okay, so just for perspective of anyone listening, it came across very strong, maybe unlike this conversation. I'm going to support, unlike a lot of other tax discussions we've had, I support a rate increase of some level four capital in the water plan. I don't support any bonds or going into debt from a community-wide perspective and county-wide perspective. Government entities in this area are highly in debt and are at very close to high ends of maximum debt capacity across the governing bodies. So I would not support that, but I would support some modest increase for capital in this position. One other question I'd ask, if I can quickly, from the standpoint of cost reduction, that is, when you invest this kind of money, you typically get some payback in cost reductions and improvements, productivity, efficiency, less water breaks and so forth. Is there any kind of return on investment here that you guys should look at?
Well, you do, but the thing that I would comment on that is that, I don't know the average age, but Brian, how old is your system right now?
Sixty percent of it.
So you've got 60 to 70% of your system that is approximately 60 years old or more, all right? And I guess the question, next question I would have, and I think I know the answer to this already, but I'm putting Brian on the spot unfortunately, I'm asking the question, is are you really keeping up with 2%, 1%, 2% removal and replacement every year at this point in time? If you did not, so what you're not doing, this is what's, this is, this is kind of the point where I'm going here, is that you're actually, the city's actually falling farther behind every year right now in terms of keeping its infrastructure on the water side up. And that's not uncommon. You're not different than 90% of the other communities, probably maybe even more in the state of Illinois and nationally. Everybody tends to be falling behind. But what's happening is the service lives of these systems is typically somewhere, I would, I would say, you're going to find pipes that'll last for 150 years, and you're going to find other ones that you need to replace in 20 years, depending on where they're installed. But typically, what we see is that systems are nearing the end of their serviceable or useful life without extensive repair. It's not uncommon to say that a water distribution system really needs to be, you need to consider turning it over at this stage in about every 50 to 100 years. So yes, well, I guess what I'm saying, there is a rate of return. The rate of return that you have is that if you get proactive and you plan this and you do this as you go forward, you're going to avoid the catastrophic, I shouldn't use that word, but the potential situation where all of a sudden you have all kinds of infrastructure issues that you just, you can't manage in terms of the burden overall on the community and the consumers at one time. This allows you to be proactive, maintain a program, and go forward with what we hope would be a reasonable plan for not putting yourself in a position where all of a sudden you've come to a year and you've got $15 million you need to spend on your water infrastructure.
Thank you. I think we talked earlier that scenario two, while, you know, with it providing for a higher rate increase upfront, lowers the amount of debt that we need over the long term. So would that then decrease the cost over the long term of the, of the projects?
No, not the cost of the projects in terms of the capital projects. If you accelerated your capital improvements program, and again, we didn't, when we increased the rates early, we're not assuming that you're accelerating. That's why we're continuing to see the rates, they go down earlier, later in the program, too.
Right, the rate increase would go down.
The, I think what I would say in terms of the cost of projects, I think it is reasonable to say that what it's going to cost us to paint a water tower or replace a water main three years from now is going to be more than what it costs us today. But that's why we factored the rate of inflation and those kinds of things into the, into the program. I think the, the, there is economy in terms of doing everything at once, meaning that the more work you do, typically the better pricing you're going to get. But the program's not set up to do all the work upfront.
Right, and I don't, I don't think that's actually where I was trying to go. I was really trying to go with the fact that if we will reduce our overall cost, if we don't have to borrow so much money to do it, if we had more of the money on hand rather than, than increasing our debt load.
Yes, I would say that that is, that that's true if you went with scenario two. I think the one, I guess the one point that I would make, though, with that is the, you're going to raise your rates on your consumers for a few years by, I don't have the sheets in front of me, but by several percent. You can borrow money right now for probably 2% or less through the SRF. So it's kind of one, do you want to raise the rates on your residents, or do you want to service a debt that right now would be about, you know, anywhere from about 2 to 1.8?
But also scenario two, in the long run, has the least total increase over the 10 years.
Right. So I think the, I think that's, that's a decision. I think we went with recommended scenario one because based on our experience, it has the least upfront impact on your residents. It still meets the desired needs on the capital program over the long term. And the, I guess the question is, are you, are you tolerable of taking out some, some low-interest loans from the state to get you rolling on your programs and getting them going? And I think that's, that's probably going to happen regardless of the scenario. It just would maybe reduce the amount that you took out in scenario two. But it doesn't eliminate it. I think that's what I want to point.
Other questions? Alderman Baker?
I think what just got illustrated was exactly my point from earlier. We don't get a gold star for the long run, 10 years from now. It feels good, it seems like it's the right thing to worry about, but everybody's trying to make their bill quarter to quarter.
Right.
It's a cash flow issue for the water flow. Absolutely. And if, I didn't know that we could borrow money for 2% or less from a state fund for something like this.
If you had a shovel-ready project to go today, you probably could get a low-interest loan for 2% or less. So, and I know, I just got done talking to Gary Binghamheimer at Illinois EPA last week, and he was indicating that those rates were going to be going down to about 1.86% in the near future, in the next several months. So it's, it's changed a little bit. At one point, the rates were high enough, and maybe other members of the city saw it, the SRF rates were such that you were really better to go out and get a bond. It's less expensive to get a bond than to use the money from the, from the low-interest loans from the state. But we just went through an assessment with the community where we were not doing the rate study. Another firm did the rate study, but we were doing the engineering aspects of the program. And that particular firm was looking at getting bonds for the community. And then when they assessed the rates that they could get from the state at that point in time, and this was a good community also, they dropped moving forward with bond issuance and are proceeding with basically a, probably about a $40 million program using low-interest loans exclusively from the state because of the rates that they can get right now.
My next question would follow up that, do you have some recommendations? Because if the cost of materials and labor are going up at more than 2%, and we can borrow that money for 2% or less, we ought to get a recommendation of just how much needs to be done, and we should pick a number, five years, 10 years' worth of work, and get going on it immediately and bond it out if it doesn't hurt the, the actual quarterly rate for the consumers, but there must be some sort of recommendation.
There are several ways to do that, and a lot of that is going to be up to how city staff wants to implement the design and moving forward on these projects. Now, I may, I haven't had a chance to talk to staff at all with this, but I can give you an example of another community that we work for and how they've tried to manage some of that. What they did is they hired a consultant to go out and really work on the design improvements for the next, what would be the designs for the next five years. What that did is that gave them the ability that if pricing was really good, they actually had the designs ready to go and could get more work done at, at a, at a lower cost in terms of the way that the rate structure was built so they could do exactly what you just said, take advantage of the low-interest loans and take advantage of what might be a good business climate in terms of contracting climate. So that was a strategy that they implemented. I would say they're about halfway through that strategy, and knock on wood, it has worked out for them. The worst-case scenario is that you do that and you get out in front of it and get ready, pricing and things aren't favorable, and you take those design drawings and you shelve those until you're ready to do it. So that was just, that's one strategy. It's not something I'm saying city of DeKalb should consider, but I'm sure you're a village engineer, as you've got plenty of experience thinking about those kinds of things, right, John? So.
Although in theory, your suggestion sounds like a good idea, but I'm not sure we want to replace a large percentage of our water system all in one year. I mean, if you replace 20%, 25% of it in two, three years, that means down the road, at some point, you're also going to be faced with replacing 20, 25% of it when the useful life of that portion runs out. I think you're better off trying to replace 2, 2.5% a year or whatever, if the life expectancy of a water main is 50 years, replace 2% of that every year. You don't want it falling down all at one time. You want it gradually and replace it as needed. So I mean, to do a large percentage of it, I'd only do that if we determined that a large percentage of it needed to be replaced right now.
I agree. That's why I'm asking the consultant to help us, because I saw an awfully lot of, was it purple lines where you have the breaks in your scheduling need more of a immediate replacement?
Right.
And there seemed to be an awfully lot of footage of lines that maybe need immediate replacement. And maybe we're at that point.
And I think you're right, and to your point and your point, I would not sit here today and say, go out and replace 20% of your system in the next two or three years. I think the mindset would be, we're looking at replacing maybe a percent to 2% a year. Well, if things line up and they're favorable, maybe you want to make that instead of 1%, 2%, or 3% or 4%. And that's, in my opinion, that's purely dependent on the business climate, what your contractors are coming in at, and what you can get money for, and also what you might already have in reserve. So we may come into the program, and we're looking at putting a million dollars away a year in capital reserve. So we may come into the program, and we're looking at putting a million dollars away a year in capital reserve. And I think as Kathy said, some years it might end up being more, some years it might end up being less, depending on the revenue in the city.
Yeah, I'm very concerned about the city's debt load. I understand this need. But we also have to keep in mind that we have many other needs that we've been discussing with regard to our streets and our vehicles, our fleet. So it's very hard for me to look at this one option when we have so many things ahead of us. I think I would prefer looking at all of this together and how can we manage all of these things moving forward, rather than taking each item separately.
I think that the water system is different in the sense that there already is a dedicated revenue source for the, the bonds. So it's a situation where you're deciding about what, what you want to do with the water system with knowing that there's rates that are going to provide that. You don't have to have a tax increase, but you do have to increase the, the rates. And you do increase the amount that our taxpayers are going to pay out of pocket.
A rate increase is a tax increase.
Well, it's, it's not the same thing in, in this particular sense that it's dedicated. Okay, if it was, if it was a rate increase for planning and zoning or a rate increase for some other service that was not dedicated, that would be more problematic for me. I can, I can view the water system in a different light than I can view the streets in the sense that it's a payment for a particular service and you're linking that payment. Now, whether we should increase the rate a given amount, I think is, you know, a legitimate question. How much do you want to increase the rate? But I don't think it's a question for me about the debt. You know, that's just a matter of choosing how you're going to finance the program that you, that you agree upon. You still have to independently consider the total effect on the local taxpayer of anything that is done. And so I firmly agree with you there. But as to whether you do it with debt or pay as you go, that doesn't bother me as much when you have a dedicated revenue source. But it does bother me, or I am equally concerned that we don't overburden our citizens in terms of the total of what we're trying to do. So I think you're, you're absolutely right that we need to consider the totality of what we need to do in, in all these areas.
Yes.
Okay. Either Kathy, John, or Emery, I'd like you to address the timeline. Recognizing our time this evening, we're pushing up against the regular meeting time. I'd like to have an idea if we need to continue a joint discussion, or are you looking at resolutions tonight that we need to bring?
I think we're looking for a recommendation of what direction to go into. The timeline we're shooting for is January 1 to have some changes made, either with the recommended rate change, along with we're recommending changing the billing to a bi-monthly billing, those types of things. We want to bring it all together at the same time. So we're shooting for January 1, which is, you know, coming up close, so.
Do we then need a continuation of the joint discussion? Or are folks comfortable this evening, you know, reaching a recommendation?
Let's get some public participation first, would that be okay? Then we'll make a, we might be ready to vote.
Emery, any?
Just going to ask, as staff, we're just looking for direction on how to proceed. You know, we've had several discussions on this. We've provided the information the council and the committee has requested. So it's up to you as far as timeline. As Director Haley indicated, we were trying to work backwards from the January 1 date because we're tying this into our discussions with DeKalb Sanitary District and as well as making it more financially feasible for our residents, so switching from billing every three months to every two months. So it's really your purview as to how to proceed, whether you feel comfortable giving direction tonight. And if you don't, then we would want to clearly know what is the path to follow. And if there is some future discussion, we would, I guess, I guess suggest or recommend that it be a joint discussion, but we're not sure if you're ready to move forward with a direction tonight or not.
Let me ask, is there further discussion from council at this point? If not, I'd like to turn to any public comment that there is. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Sietas, and if you come to the microphone, please.
Good evening. Lynn Fazekis, Fourth Ward. I really appreciate this discussion tonight. Thank you. I do need to address some historical facts. I might be off by a year. But back when the recession hit, you were late 2008, or 2007, early 2009, there, budget time came around, and of course, during those years of the recession, a lot of us started looking at it a lot more closely. Anyway, there, there was a, a water tower that needed to be painted. And we ended up borrowing money for that. At the, at the same time, we transferred $500,000 to the general fund, ostensibly to cover the salaries of a couple of billing clerks that seemed like, more like a plugging of a hole in the budget. Now, that happened year after year after year, and over time, the amount transferred from the Water Division to the General Fund grew. The last year that I can remember was fiscal year 2014. And I believe something along the lines of $670,000 was transferred to the General Fund for these two billing clerks. So speaking as a resident and consumer of, of water, and I have a soft spot for the Water Division, I use water every day, I like DeKalb water. I never have a problem with it, and that's entirely the, the point. It's first rate. But moving forward, if you're going to raise my water rates for improvements to the water system, that's what I want it to be used for, and not just to plug up budget holes. And so I do believe that the idea that's come up of, of actually putting something like that into our financial policies is a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Mike?
Michael Welsh, and I'll be really brief, I promise. I don't understand why we don't send out water bills and garbage bills and sanitary sewer bills every month. I mean, it's, to most families, when the water bill arrives, you know, it's chaos. This is this huge bill compared to anything else you buy in the house. And I have to believe that some of the cost of doing that would be made up with the fact that you've got the money a month earlier. But that's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wishing to address council at this point? Okay, and I apologize, my earlier comment for discussion included the Finance Advisor Committee, if anyone wishes further discussion this evening. What is the pleasure of council? Do you wish to continue this joint discussion in our next committee of the hall? What's your pleasure?
I would be willing to continue, I mean, because I'd like to hear a recommendation from the Finance Committee and at least get, get their, more of their input, and I haven't heard a lot of it yet, so.
Okay. Alderman Noreco.
At this point, I'm not comfortable making a decision in terms of direction. And I, and I agree, I think it would be very useful to hear some more comments and questions from individuals who are far more skilled and schooled in looking at figures than I am.
Mike, would continuing the joint discussion in two weeks be appropriate? Or do we need a wider window for you folks to digest and consider the material in front of us?
I don't think it would be inappropriate to, to continue in, in two weeks. And I think in, in talking to members, I won't speak for them, but I will say that in talking to members, I think we have all been diligent about staying up with, with the information. So I think we would be prepared to continue. Is that inaccurate, function?
Okay. What, what do we need then to continue the discussion this evening? Dean, do we need a motion to continue or just to turn this and bring the topic back?
You do not need a motion. We will have it listed on the September 28 Committee of the Hall meeting as another joint City Council/Finance Advisory Committee meeting with this topic. We will need to look at if there were other items that we were bringing to the council that night, whether we need to move some things around. I don't know offhand what other items we had tentatively scheduled for that night.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone object to bringing this topic back to a joint meeting on the 28th? Okay, we'll proceed in that fashion. I'd like to entertain a motion. We do need executive discussion before the regular meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion for executive session of City Council approving discussion of pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C11 and personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Alderman Noreco. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman O'Leary. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Carried.
Mayor, if we could get a roll call on that, please.
Okay. A roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. We will be delaying the convening of the regular meeting, but we'll get back as soon as practical.
As quick as we can.
Let's use the large.